We would like to call the April nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, meeting of the Lebanon County Commissioners to order. And as is typical, we will begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment looks a little weak this morning. All right, without that, we'll move to approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
We're moving on to the second to approve the minutes as printed. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. The minutes are approved, and we're ready for the Treasurers' report.
Okay. We had receipts on April seventeenth and eighteenth of one million, five hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and eighty-two cents. That brings us to a total cash of eight million, one hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. We had expenditures this week of two million, two hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. The tax lane is ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and thirty-two cents. So we had a balance of five million, seven hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy cents. Now, since that, I have moved two point six million aside for our payment. I haven't been doing that. And I also have with the expense that we had there, I also paid back the reserve for the balance of a million dollars we owed that. We have a big plate downstairs to process shortly, so we're good.
So moved.
Motion in the second to approve the Treasurers' report as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Very good. The report is accepted. Congratulations on getting things back to normal.
Hopefully. That'll happen every day.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning, Director of Human Resources.
Leanne Schenk, Human Resources Assistant.
Moving on to personnel transactions and resignations and terminations. Colleen Guyer, part-time senior center manager, resignation effective May nineteenth. Beth Ann Bates, part-time utility officer, resignation effective April sixteenth. Brent Schultz, detective, resignation effective April twentieth. Starr Brubaker, team clerk, resignation effective April twenty-seventh. Haley Smolko, docket specialist, resignation effective April twentieth. Danielle Riddle, full-time LPN, termination effective April nineteenth. Tammy Shirk, full-time LPN, termination effective April nineteenth. Lindsay Brensinger, full-time LPN, termination effective April sixteenth. And I have a correction for Cindy Grant, second deputy of the Treasurers' office. Termination has now elected retirement, retirement date of February fifteenth. Termination date will remain February fourteenth.
Was Colleen Guyer wrong?
She just resigned. She retired, but essentially it's a resignation because she's part-time, so.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to accept those resignations and terminations. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting those resignations and terminations indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Moving on to F M L A lees of absence. Rose Marie Urban from Children and Youth, up to twelve weeks of intermittent F M L A, effective May first. And again, that can be spread out for a year. Melissa Marshall from Renova, one year of intermittent F M L A, effective April ninth. And then Cassidy Kleinfelder from the Plonitaries Office, twelve weeks, up to twelve weeks of F M L A, effective April fifth. Edward Sarudy from the prison, ten-day unpaid leave of absence, effective April eighth.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to accept those lees of absence. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Changes in status, transfers, and promotions. Claude Meese, promotion from full-time correctional officer at the prison to corporal at the prison at the rate of twenty-two dollars and fifty cents per hour, effective April twenty-second. Renee Ream, change of status from full-time developmental assistant at Renova to part-time developmental assistant at Renova. No change in her rate, effective April twenty-third.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to accept those changes of status. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Moving on to other transactions, I have a motion to approve sheriff group's fingers. Recommendation to temporarily create a casual part-time clerk position within the sheriff's office to assist with the concealed carry permit processing for eight weeks with a maximum of twenty hours worked per week at a grade four on the non-dated salary chart.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to adopt the sheriff's request for an additional, some additional help. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Renova would like to hire Sonia Wright, full-time developmental assistant, at the rate of eleven dollars and fifty-six cents per hour with a forty-five cent shift differential, effective April twenty-third.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to accept the request by Renova. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all the transactions previously read, plus the following. Brent A. Schultz, incremental increase detective. It's a one-time incremental increase of two thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-four cents, effective April ninth. Gabriel Lopez, longevity, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one-time payment of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, effective April twenty-sixth. Michael Wieland, longevity, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one-time payment of five hundred dollars, effective April twenty-sixth. Maurice Moyer, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one-time payment of five hundred dollars, effective April twenty-sixth. Timothy Piero, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one-time payment of five hundred dollars, effective April twenty-sixth. And Dustin Gonzalez, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one-time payment of five hundred dollars, effective April twenty-sixth.
Second motion.
I have a motion in a second to accept those salary board changes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Under mandated conference seminars, I have Richard showers from Children and Youth would like to attend engaging families experience opioid use in Mechanicsburg, May third. Mileage meals, tolls, reimbursement, three credits, mandated by DHS. Megan Mccone and Anna Marcais from Children and Youth would like to attend supporting case workers in using critical thinking skills in Mechanicsburg, May eighth, mileage, meals, tolls, reimbursement, three credits, mandated by DHS.
Excuse me. Well, we just not doing the mandated as presented, instead of having to make your reading?
I think they did that.
We did that the last time.
Because there's so much, but if you want to do that, that's fine.
It's a, I mean, I just, when they're mandated, it seems like unless there's a question.
It's entirely up to the board. Just go ahead with what you're doing.
Supporting case workers in using critical thinking skills and, I'm sorry, we did that one already. Karen Alonso and Sue Emrick from Children and Youth would like to attend the P C Y A meeting in Gettysburg, June twenty-eighth. One hundred fifty dollar total registration fee, mileage, parking, tolls, reimbursement, mandated by DHS and P C Y A. Marjorie Ulrich from Children and Youth would like to attend the investigative interviewing in child sexual abuse cases in Mechanicsburg, May tenth. Mileage meals, tolls, reimbursement, twelve credits, mandated by DHS. Jen Whitman from District Attorney's Office would like to attend the two thousand and eighteen A O P C coordinator's symposium in Hershey, April sixteenth and seventeenth, thirteen credits, mandated by A O P C. Matt Mellon, Rob Harding from District Attorney's Office would like to attend the introduction to trial advocacy in State College, September twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh, seven hundred dollar total registration fee, lodging, meals, parking, reimbursement, fifteen credits, mandated by the P A C L A Board. Joseph Morales from Department of Emergency Services would like to attend the I C S three hundred and four hundred in Lancaster, June fourth through the seventh, mandated by P E M A. Dawn Hooton, John Ryder from Probation Services would like to attend the autism training in Orfield, May second, meals reimbursement, three credits, mandated by J C J C. Rodolfo Leon, John Correll, and Tyler Walshton from Probation Services would like to attend interviewing the alcohol and drug impaired subject in Ready, May thirty-first, meals reimbursement, seven point five credits, mandated by P V P P. Brian Diedrich, Nicole Nicholas, Sidomick, Elizabeth Judd, Elliot Katz, Vienna Vasquez, and Miles Kaufman from Public Defender's Office would like to attend the two thousand and eighteen joint annual conference of the P A C D L and P D A Board in Harrisburg, April twenty-sixth through seventh. Two thousand two hundred and fifty dollar total registration fee with mileage, parking, tolls, reimbursement, twelve credits, mandated by P A C L A Board.
I move to approve, but I have a question. Do you even know if Brian, it seems like their whole crew's going to be out.
I have the same question.
Have they notified the courts and the D A's office of this, is this meant?
I spoke to the, I spoke to the judge about that, and I spoke to Brian about that. There were, this is an instance where the three of these public defenders are capital case certified, so that's law cases, and this is the only opportunity they had to get these C L As. The judge, his reaction was, you know, he understands that it has to be that, so.
I mean, we could encourage Brian to.
If there are alternative dates and so on, to at least split it up because we did, just ran into it.
And to notify the other affected departments, if they could, courtesy, that's it.
Okay, with that question answered, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the mandated conferences as presented indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered.
Under requested conference seminars, I have Michael Anderson and Joelle and Son from voter registration would like to attend the vendor demo voting systems in Harrisburg, April twenty-sixth, with mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement.
Second.
Motion in the second to send our votes to what has now become a very important effort there in Harrisburg. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed.
Although I've always been concerned about the vote.
Oh, I know. Well, that's our goal.
And Michael Anderson and Joelle and Son from voter registration also would like to attend the A E P C E P spring and summer meeting in Williamsport, June seventh and eighth, eighty dollar total registration fee with lodging, mileage, meals, parking, reimbursement.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered. Thank you. All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Michael Anderson, Chief Clerk, voter registration.
And this is the Board of Elections effort, so I'll call the Board of Elections to order. And you may proceed, Michael.
Good morning. I'm here this morning to request permission from, or request approval from the Board to approve the sample ballots that I did distribute to you earlier. Those ballots represent the ballots that will happen in the primary on May fifteenth. I gave you examples of the Republican and three examples of the Democratic ballots, and I'm asking for your approval of those ballots.
Move to approve the ballots as presented.
A second motion.
Are there any questions or concerns about the ballot that's been prepared? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the primary ballot indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So ordered. The ballot's approved.
I just want one item with the ballots. Because of the way the, this election, there is no, the county, Democratic County Committee has their members on the ballot, so Democratic ballot's actually a little bit bigger than the Republican ballot for the primary. What we'll do is I'm going to try to work with I T to try to get, somehow find a way to get all samples of the Democratic ballot on the county website, because there's fifty-five different styles because of the fifty-five different precincts. The Republican, there's actually only four because of the, three actually, because of the breakout, because of the first, second, and under four state legislative districts. The other thing I have that I wanted to present was just a reminder to everybody regarding absentee ballots and their deadlines. The last day to apply for civilian absentee ballot is May eighth. And then the last day for us to receive those voted civilian absentee ballots is five P M. on May eleventh. If there is a military member or overseas person, that would be, that deadline would be five P M. on May twenty-second. So they're allowed to have a week after the election. And the primary is scheduled for Tuesday, May fifteenth.
Anything else?
Any Dent update as to what the repercussions of that decision would be?
Basically, the, what we're understanding is that once the governor receives the official notice that, that he's going to be vacating that office, then he would have ten days to do a writ. And at that point, he would, he could schedule a special election. He could not schedule it less than sixty days after he receives that, he does that writ. And so basically, you know, timeframe would be seventy days after that official notification, and then it would. My understanding is there's no period in time where he has to have it scheduled by. So it's possible he could wait and just schedule it within November election if he wanted to wait that long. It's really in his court. And my understanding is his spokesman says that once they receive it, then they'll make it a termination.
So it's really not official yet because it hasn't been received? It's just been in the media?
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, maybe.
I believe, I believe Representative Dent has said that he plans to do this between May eighth and the end of May, but that's all.
But it would be in December thirty-one because that's the end of its term.
That's correct, and this would be just for the current fifteenth U.S. Congressional District, which encompasses twenty. I believe I told you twenty-seven in my email. It's actually twenty-nine because I always forget about those two that are in the fourth legislative district. So it's twenty-nine precincts that would, are fifty-five that would be affected, if they do have a special election just for that.
Of course, it affects all the other counties where.
Correct, which.
Would be a considerable expense for a number of counties, so.
Correct, and, and you know, it looks like that encompasses multiple counties because of the way that fifteenth district kind of sprawled across.
And the dolphin, you know.
Yeah, so. I will keep you informed if I hear any more.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
I think Ben wants to say something.
Could I just add a point there? If the governor does not, if there's no special election, if there's no congressman, the district offices remain open to do constituent service.
Gordy?
You said at the last meeting, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that in looking at a possible switch of voting machines and getting new voting machines you were targeting, twenty-twenty, the governor recently came out and said he, he was looking at no later than twenty-nineteen. What kind of steps are you taking right now to implement that type of a schedule? And are you any closer to finding a machine that has a paper trail that you were allowed to?
Just, just a port of clarification, the directive is that we would have to be under contract by December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen with a system that needs a certification process that the Department of State has handed down to us, which is a, you know, a system that has some type of paper on it. As far as where, where we are, you know, two weeks from, you know, or two weeks ago, we, there is going to be a demonstration, I guess is the way you want to put it. The Department of State is actually going to have in Harrisburg at the Farm Show complex on the twenty-sixth of April. We will be attending that, so there's going to be a time where it's going to be for commissioners, election directors at the end of the morning, and then that will be open to the public. I can tell you at this point, right now, the Department of State only has one company that they have certified with the new, the new guidelines. We're being told that they're hopeful, they're hopeful to have that process. That process will be sped up, and that they would hope to have maybe five or six vendors. What we've done is we're going to have, we're going to be scheduling some vendors that try to come in so that we can, we can look at all different, you know, possibilities of how we want to move forward. And, and obviously that I will keep the commissioners and invite them to any of those demonstrations that we have. We're going to go to as many as we can, get as much information as we can from the vendors, see what's out there, see what's going to be certified. You know, we talk a lot about machines because that's what we have now, but there's different types of voting systems out there besides just machine-based. So I, I think we need to look at all of them and see what would best serve the voters of Lebanon County, so.
So when you're saying that you have until December thirty-first probably to be in contract.
Right.
Are you looking at the, at the twenty-twenty primary, or is that?
The governor would like us to have it in place by November twenty-nineteen, so that our first election is not one that is obviously a presidential year. I think that's a very optimistic outlook, but we will do our due diligence, but we'll, we'll see what we can do. Obviously, it all depends on certification process, who's certified. You know, we have a current vendor that we use that obviously is going to put something through that process, and he wants us to look at that, so we're going to do that. But we're going to look at other vendors as well. So it's kind of, it's, it's early to know where we can be and how fast, but we have to remember that we're, you know, a new system. We're going to have to do training, we're going to have to have all of that in place, get our coworkers involved, have the public involved. So I think we need to do all that and see where we are.
Is the Board comfortable with that timeframe?
No. We're trying to read this.
Commissioner List speaks for the Board, in case you don't know, so you can put that in your, your news cast, Gordy.
We have to comply with what we're dealt, so I'd say no, but we will comply.
I think obviously the biggest thing is that with this is the funding aspect. You know, I just, I believe you and I talked, there was some federal hava money that will be distributed to the counties, which my understanding is going to be issued based, based on our registration numbers. But then again, that's going to be far shorter than what we would need to, to replace our system. So, you know, we have to look at, you know, the governor said that he's going to try to work with the legislative branch and trying to get something done, but, you know, at this point, you know, it could be county run, and so that would be something else that we're going to have to look at. It's one of the things, when, when we had talked earlier, before any of this happened, is what we wanted to do is, we thought it was important to make sure that, you know, we're prepared, we do our due diligence, we secure funding, and of course, our current voting system is working very well. And so it wasn't something we felt, yes, we know we're getting closer to the end of the useful life of that voting system, but our voting machines are in very good shape and we thought it could last the twenty-twenty election. So this is just kind of pushing everything up.
I know we're putting the cart pretty far before the horse in this case, but as far as raising, I believe you said one point four million dollars and whatever hava money you get, which I doubt is going to cover the full freight. You are, you can raise taxes, you can do a bond issue, you can take out a loan. At this point in time, do you have a preference?
First preference, if there's some capital money available, maybe there's a combination of borrow and cap, using capital equipment from money. But, yeah, that'll all be, whatever the best possible scenario would be, we'll find out which, and we're dealt.
Correct, and the one point four would be, as we had spoke on the phone, was that if we replaced voting machines with new type of ballot marking devices, that we then also have to have precinct level scanners. So you, that, that cost could change greatly depending on what type of voting system we go with, that paper system we go with. And so that, that's something that we need to look at and obviously have the discussion with the Board and Commissioners as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to know, in June, do you have the first vendor set up to come in?
Yes.
Is that open to the public?
At this point, I wasn't going to, just because I did think it's such an early stage, that I think that it would be good for us to be able to see what they have. Because at this point, right today, what they're bringing is not certified. So I, I know, speaking with E S and S and N's that are coming in, you know, that's something they're working towards. But I, I think for us, I think we needed to do the early groundwork, look at these systems, see kind of what we like, and then maybe have, you know, narrow it down, have maybe a couple we like, and then open those to the public. Because I even talked, because I had coworker training this week, and I have it next week, and one of the things I'm telling them is I want them involved as well, because I want them to come in and see some of these things. But I think that we, we need to look at our, I think, you know, my office and you as well, need to be looking at some of this stuff at first, kind of maybe narrow it down what we may want to do, and then invite the public in at that point. So I definitely want them involved, I just think it's really early at this point. At least that's my, my thought process.
I just recall that there was an expo, at the expo, where we invited all the vendors, similar to what they're doing in Harrisburg at the Farm Show, to allow the public to provide feedback.
Absolutely, and, and I think at some point that we can do something like that. I just think it's so early. And any S and S is our current vendor now. They, they really wanted to come in and show what they had and want to show it to you. And so that's why I have it here in this room, just as an early stage, but I'm definitely open to doing something like that and trying to skip. But I can tell you right now, the biggest thing is because of the timeline being so tight, a lot of the vendors here are getting scheduled. And what we're being told by the Department of State is they're going to be doing a lot of these. They're going to be scheduling and having the vendors here do it across the state. The one in Harrisburg is the one that is the first one that they're doing. They're going to do others. So maybe in correlation with them, we could do something as well.
Let me just be clear on one thing. I mean, when those demos happen, obviously, it's a meeting of the Election Board, so from a sunshine perspective.
Has to be open.
It's open, but I think what, what Mike's saying is it's not, it's not intended to be, you know.
Give the tires.
Yeah, like, you know, a voter, a voter demo type thing just yet.
And only because I don't know the system, obviously. So once I get, see some of these, get familiar with them, and we kind of get an idea. Because honestly, I would like the Board to be open to different types of systems besides just a ballot marking system where we have, you know, multiple of those at precincts and, and that such. I'd like to look at all different options with which we can do paper ballots. So, you know, until we can kind of work those things out, I think that, yes, we'll be open because there are open. But just as far as having immediate blitz and inviting everybody and please kind of see it, I think there'd be questions that I wouldn't be able to answer at that very first one, because, you know, I haven't seen it, if that makes any sense.
Unless I'm convinced otherwise, I'm really not interested in having the public come to a vendor meet when it's not a certified vendor. I, I would think that would be a waste of a lot of time for, just for, why would we expose somebody to something that isn't even certified by the state? So let's get, you know, the process down.
Gordy?
On the other hand, I am a member of the public, the D O R. Are you, are you going to keep us out as well?
No.
We're not going to keep anyone out.
It's public, just.
Okay, that's.
That's what I understood there.
Just as well, it's, the difference is that the intention of, I think, those first meetings are for the Board to kind of lay eyes on these things and maybe get a little familiar with what's out there, and then later in the process, I don't want to speak for you, but later in the process, then more of a, a public demo.
A hands-on thing where the public could access them, and I, and I think they should be all certified machines at the time. I, now that everyone else has commented, I have to comment because I can't hold back. I just find it amazing, or astounding, I'd say, that the governor and the Secretary of State sit up in Harrisburg and decide, you know, on a moment's notice, without any input or anything from counties essentially, that, you know, November two thousand nineteen is the magic date, that we have to have new voting systems in place. Doesn't matter what we have to go through to accomplish that, or how much money we have to spend. They care not about that. And I wonder if they're smart enough to even consider, these companies, they think they have thousands of these voting machines sitting on a shelf somewhere, ready to pull down and sell to the county. So they, they really haven't made any reasonable considerations without sending this dictate out. So I've said my piece now as well. Anything else for the Board of Elections? Do I have a motion to adjourn? We adjourned the motion, the Board of Elections is adjourned, and then we'll reconvene the Board of Commissioners.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Good morning.
You may proceed.
Good morning, I'm Carol Davies, I am the Administrator of the Area Agency on Aging. And with me today is Melissa Martinez, our Deputy Administrator. We have three items to present to the commissioners this morning. The first are contract amendments for the 2017-2015 fiscal year. We have 19 different changes with our contract with providers, some are increases and some are decreases, and they come out to a net total of an increase of $14,139. We do have funds available within our current area agency on budget to pay for these costs, so we are not requesting any funding from the commissioners for these.
Do we need a motion to approve the contract changes?
We make a motion to approve the contract changes.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or any questions for Carol?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
The second item is an amendment to our 2017-2018 Title 19 agreement. This agreement outlines how we receive certain Medicaid payments from the state for services that we provide, and this specific amendment corrects the contract language relating to our nursing home transition, nursing home transition program to allow payments to be made to us for this fiscal year. There was missing language in all the agreements across the state that, that this was intended.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve that request, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
Yep. One other thing.
I have one other thing. The other thing is a contract with AgingWell, Pennsylvania. This is a contract that would take effect on July 1st of 2018 and run for three years to June 30th of 2021. And this is, this contract represents a transition of our assessment function from being paid directly by a state agency to being paid by an entity called AgingWell. AgingWell will hold a contract with the state to provide assessments across the state, and then AgingWell is contracting with various agencies on aging across the state to actually perform assessments. So this is a change in how we're doing business and moving to a single, one payment per assessment. The agreement has been reviewed by, well, we've reviewed the agreement as far as insurance requirements, and we are in compliance with those. We also reviewed the contract with respect to some of the legal terms, but we are still waiting to find a legal review from the solicitor on the contract and the terms and the contract issues.
Question, if I may, please?
Yes.
I looked through the agreement, and it's talking about, I think it was like 95% inclusion. Or there's a, we lose, are we maintaining that now?
We were doing a great job of maintaining that 95% up until a short while ago, when one of our longtime supervisors left the agency, so we are working to build ourselves back up to that percentage. Part of what will happen with this agreement is there's a new assessment tool that will be coming up that's supposed to be shorter and take less time on the part of our assessment, but we have not yet seen this tool. So, so there will be a significant change when this happens, it will be a different assessment instrument, and as you, as you say, it will be, it will be a financial penalty if assessments aren't completed on time.
And have they talked about, in cases like this, it's a very legitimate reason why on a check-by basis you might not be able to meet that? Do they have grace periods or something when you have to bring new people up to speed?
They do have certain allowances that will be considered a reason why the assessment could be quickly late, but a new supervisor wasn't one of them, it was more guards things would be a concern themselves.
I'll second.
I'll second the motion, I just, it may be confusing, these issues, but would this be, if you fall below that, that something like, say, at the hospital may get backed up because they are not being processed, so that someone that wants to be released to a nursing home has to wait? Is that the kind of thing that if you go below that, you may notice that kind of an issue come up?
These are those assessments you're talking about, these are people who, in some cases, are people who are in the hospital and need to be assessed, yes.
So if the hospital's full and they're waiting for those beds, that's where you'd get the call?
Yes.
Okay, so that is related to that?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the AAA's request for that assessment contract. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Anything else, Carol?
That's all I have.
Any questions?
Okay. Commissioner Litz has a question. I'm going to need, I'm going to need you to ask. Okay, yeah, wait till they...
Carol, can you give me an update on Pride of the Valley?
Our bus?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Some people have been discussing our bus. Our bus was recently in a small accident, and as we reviewed that, there was discussion about whether or not we should maintain having the bus of our own. We are the only area agency on aging in the state that has their own bus, and a recommendation was made to us that we discontinue using the bus, and we are reviewing that recommendation to see if that is what we should in fact do.
And where did that recommendation come from?
It came from the county safety committee.
The county safety committee.
I can speak to that a little bit. So, and that, and that recommendation was to sort of review whether or not this is still a good thing, the bus is 18 years old. So from a maintenance perspective, it has had occasions where it's broken down, you know, away from home, and then they have to find a relief bus to come and pick them up and so on, that has happened. But as she said, there was an accident where a hole in a vehicle and so on were hit by the, by our bus, and of course, that was covered by insurance and so on. But some of that is a result of a difficulty of finding drivers who are available, qualified, and so on, and that, you know, to get someone who is just available on call to say, we have a trip in two weeks or, or whatever is, is hard to find. And essentially, what we're doing is running a mini charter operation there in that we, we book the bus for a trip, the costs are then divvied up among the participants for, to, to pay, you know, I don't know what's a typical fee.
It's based on mileage, and I think it goes from maybe six to 18 mileage, it's on the distance.
And, and so, you know, from the safety committee's perspective, this looks like something that could be done with a, with a charter company, so that's, the recommendation is to take a look at that before proper business. You know, replacing that bus is, is a few hundred thousand dollars, and at the time, that bus was purchased back in 19, or 2000?
It was 2000.
There were funds available for it, there was a, there was a donation fund, I think, that over the years had accumulated, and they were able to use that for the bus, but there isn't anything like that, most of this would have to be purely accounting expense to replace that bus. Those are the things that have battered into taking it.
It certainly, based on just the safety side of this thing, and that, that makes sense to me, that you have difficulty finding a driver to begin with, and you have a bus that's aged, I think that's a bad combination to me from the safety perspective of our citizenry, so I'd rather have it in the hands of a, you know, a vendor that is in business for that purpose and that we know that, you know, things will be done properly.
For a long time, we had a driver that was, you know, he treated it like it was his own bus.
He treated it like a baby, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we washed it every time and cleaned it out, and he was always available, and he, and he kept after the, you know, the maintenance, I'm sure that was all done, but, but it, you know, we've had a combination, we've had some love and transit drivers who would fill in, we've had some of our own that we would just employ, and it's just becoming difficult to do, and a mixture of drivers is a reliability issue and b a qualification issue if you, if you, you know...
And actually, the usage of the bus has declined since those days that Jane was talking about, when we had that one gentleman.
Well, does it get used recently?
I would say currently, we're taking maybe trips in a month as opposed to maybe 15 years ago, when the bus was going out, maybe four times a week, especially in the summer months during the minimum months because of the weather, the bus doesn't travel much at all.
I think there may be a message in there that if we're the only county in the state that is doing that, there's probably a reason that that's the case. Good, good thing to be looking at.
Anything else?
That's all.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Congressman, how are you?
Good morning. How are you? Stephanie Shirk, Client Relations Manager with Penn State Extension for Lebanon County,
and this is Olivia Laman, Extension Coordinator for Mosquito, or Disease Control, I always get those words, so. Just wanted to come today and thank you again for all your support in the 100th anniversary celebration for Penn State Extension back in March. I brought along copies of the booklet, and I think all of you received them at the, at the event, but in case you wanted to have some here in the office, I brought those along. Wanted to give an update on some of our programs that are not our traditional farming applications, as that's just gearing up for this time of year with a lot of planting, but more on the food side of things. In fact, I was just at Penn State's Extension, Penn State Extension's annual conference yesterday at the University Park, where all of us came together. And one of the major speakers that we had talked about why is food so controversial? And I think that's very relevant in today's society, even recent year with our salmonella issues in the news and also E. coli, also the dairy industry. So I wanted, wanted to share a little bit on programming that supports the food aspect with our public consumers. We were able to bring on Katie Greenwell, the new Food, Family and Health educator back in the summer, and she is now getting programming going with her Dining with Diabetes. I just learned this morning when I came in to grab a flyer and bring it to you that the class is full, so that's four weeks in May, you'll have a two and a half hour class to teach on healthy nutrition habits and activity, to deal with diabetes or to preempt getting diabetes. So we have a waitlist, if there's others that you know are interested, we'll build that list, and she'll be looking to provide this programming on a regular basis. We also have our Master Gardeners Plant Sale coming up on May 5th. That program and the sales of that program fully supports our Master Gardener Program, those proceeds stay within, within Lebanon County to support their activities they do throughout the year with helping with home, or food preservation and other herbal types of food things that we pull along. Our food, safety and quality educators have put together the Home Food Preservation Workshops. We also have pressure canning, gauge testing, dates that have been put together for the summer months in the region, and so just wanted to bring a little bit of attention to those things, as well as Meet the Master Gardener Night, we have that on Monday, June 4th at the Ag Center. So if I can add these details or give them to you, that would be great. Along with the dairy industry, we have been supporting all of those farmers, in fact, last week, we had a number of industry representatives at the Lebanon County office to talk about what we can do to help educate the public on where milk is produced in Lebanon County and in Pennsylvania and how that's distributed, because we're learning that consumers don't understand where their milk comes from, and how we can look at those labels and ensure that it is a Pennsylvania product, and more importantly, for Lebanon County, a Lebanon County product. I shared an email with you earlier this week on all that Penn State is doing to source local foods for our campus, for our Commonwealth campuses. And with that, they talked about hyper-local foods, being foods that are produced in the county or the neighboring county to go. That definitely applies to our Lebanon County dairy farmers and how we want to bring awareness and attention to consumers being able to find where their milk comes in Lebanon County, and that's a way that we can bridge the gap between consumer knowledge and education of where their food's sourced and comes from, and the producers that we know are so vital to our economy here in Lebanon County. So just wanted to share a little bit about that. Do you have any other questions? Okay. 4H is gearing up, we've got a lot of our clubs are now underway, re-enrollment numbers are solid again, and we're working through this process with the kids for their projects, many of them with that goal of our Lebanon County Fair here at the end of July to be able to showcase and exhibit their projects there. We're also working with you here in the county to be able to update the horse, the horse rings there over in the Expo Center, so we thank you for that.
What we want to hear about mosquito.
Yep. So, was it, last week, we had the annual tire collection on April 11th, and I just want to give a little bit of information about the tire collection. So it was, I think it was a success with over 200 residents participating, along with municipalities picking up tires along the side of the road at dump sites, and, and they brought tires along with them as well. We collected roughly 2,500 tires, filling three and a half tractor-trailer loads, and weighing just over 43 tons. I want to personally thank the, the commissioners in the county for contributing to the tire collection, that allowed a lot of residents to bring in their tires for free. And I would also like to extend my thanks to the local municipalities who were generous enough to, again, agree to add to that amount and allow even more of their own residents to come bring in tires for free. I just want to explain a little bit why, why we do the tire collection. So tires are really an ideal habitat for mosquitoes. They hold stagnant water that gets really organic with leaf litter and things like that, and it, it creates a really good habitat for mosquitoes. This tire collection was a really great opportunity to manage those tires, and then in turn, it can positively impact the health of our local communities, because these tires, again, carry mosquitoes that have the potential to carry some life-altering diseases. So I want to encourage anyone who did not get the chance to participate in this tire collection, to either contact their local trash collection or landfill and ask them if there are any opportunities to dispose their tires with them. Or if they don't have the funds to do something like that, they can always drill holes in their tires through a drain of water, and then next year, hopefully bring their tires to that collection. And with the tire collection behind us, it is now mosquito season. So despite the unseasonable weather, trapping is already underway, and I've already found mosquito larvae in Lebanon County. It's a good time for residents to consider policing their own yards and looking for standing water, whether this be in flower pots, the saucers beneath their flower pots, clogged gutters, or bird baths, they should consider possibly draining that water or find a way to treat it with mosquito dunks or other pesticides that you can find out at your local Lowe's or Home Depot. I think if we do this as a county-wide effort, we're going to get a step ahead, and a step ahead in front of mosquito-borne disease is definitely a positive way to go. If anyone has concerns or complaints, I again want to give out my contact information for them to share that information with me, and I can go and look at those sites, and they can call in at the Lebanon Penn State Extension office. I'm going to reiterate their phone number, which is 717-270-4391, or email me personally at O A A five zero two eight at P S U dot E D U, and I will get on those.
Anyone have any questions for our extension folks? All right, thank you very much for coming and sharing with us, we always appreciate it. You know you're always welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
ahead in front of mosquito-borne disease is definitely a positive way to go. If anyone has concerns or complaints, I again want to give out my contact information for them to share that information with me and I can go and look at those sites. And they can call in at the Lebanon Penn State Extension Office. I'm going to reiterate their phone number, which is 717-270-4391, or email me personally at O A A five zero two eight at P S U dot E D U, and I will get on those.
Anyone have any questions for our extension folks? All right. Thank you very much for coming and sharing with us. We always appreciate it. You know you're always welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay. I've got five or six things here. First, application for county liquid fuel aid, first one being for Jonestown Borough. Pretends to use their allocation for general road maintenance in 2018 at a cost of $5,000. Their allocation would be $1,905. Second one is Orville Creek Township, also intending to use it for general road maintenance for $4,000, and their allocation would be $3,892.
A motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve those liquid fuel allocations. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, so ordered.
Next, I have a resolution that requires your adoption for providing local match for operating financial assistance, local match to Lebanon Transit. This is a requirement each year that in order for them to draw down their federal funds, there must be a local match shown. And you have this budget in your 2018 budget. It is quarterly payments of $28,096 for a total of 100. Plus, I'm sorry, then we also give them an in-kind with being able to use the radio system to communicate these, the MA radio system to communicate their buses. So all total, the match is $112,384.
May I ask a question? Did they not also use our GIS to track or do they have a separate system? In other words, would that match really be larger with in-kind?
I don't think they use our GIS. We don't have a tracking.
Because I thought they had a thing that they could see the where their buses are.
If they do, that's their own satellite.
Okay, but I thought it was based on our GIS.
GIS is just database. We don't track anything. Instead, we just maintain data.
Just trying to see if we had a larger match. Also move to provide the $112,384 total in kind of hash match.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve that contribution to Lebanon Transit. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, so ordered.
Next, I have exemption requests for certified disabled veterans who are eligible for those exemptions from real estate tax. They are Edward Eisenhower, 24, Weaverland Road, Fredericksburg; George L. Bane of Greenbrier Drive, Myerstown; Ryan Rooney, Twin Creeks Drive, Jonestown; and Philip Edwards of Spruce Street, Palmyra. All have met the criteria, and we received letters from the Department of Military Affairs certifying.
I'm going to approve those exemptions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those military, disabled military veteran exemptions from real estate insurance, or yeah, insurance, real estate tax. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, so ordered.
Good. Next, I have a letter for the Lebanon County Historical Society designating them as the official county historical society of Lebanon County. This is an annual letter you can provide to them, which makes them eligible. I'm sure if they, if there are grants out there for the designated any longer, but it nevertheless makes them eligible for some grants being the official historical society of Lebanon County.
I so move to make the Lebanon County Historical Society our official historical society for the county.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the Lebanon County Historical Society as the official historical society of Lebanon County. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, so ordered.
And then I have a proclamation for Greg Stigall, who is being honored by the Lebanon Valley Chamber of Commerce Military Appreciation Military Affairs Committee for the General Secretary Frank Smoker Beyond the Call Award at an upcoming event. Can I say? Take that one.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve that proclamation. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, so ordered.
If I could just follow up on from last meeting, there was a discussion about potentially pursuing or proposal to pursue a baseline groundwater study from the USGS and the Department of Community and Economic Development that you, I think, all saw by now. I did provide a little more information, had some conversations with hydrologists at the USGS and had a conversation with the CED. Had a little bit more information from some of the other counties who have undertaken this project and provided that with the ASOC. Just if you wanted to have a follow-up discussion or continue to look at the information. And I also shared you, shared with you an email that just came the other day from Ed Boito at DEP wherein they are created and they are announcing a new grant initiative to distribute the $12.6 million in fines that they assessed on Sunoco across the Mariner East line. They are redistributing those funds, those fine proceeds to 85, within the 85 municipalities that are in the corridor of the Mariner East, which includes five or six municipalities in Lebanon County. And eligible recipients are municipalities, nonprofits, watershed associations, conservation districts. I do miss a one there, but essentially I forwarded that on to you, so it's just an awareness thing that there's quite a bit of money there. If you just take the 85 municipalities, do some simple arithmetic division on the $12.5 million, that's $150,000 per entity. It gets, not that it's going to be distributed that way, but just putting it in perspective how much funding is there. And so that would be a pretty good opportunity for some of those organizations that have projects in mind or maybe haven't had the funds to do something that just came along. So it opens up on May 7th. Not all of the details on the grant are available yet, but they will be made up. I have an email that Ed Boito wrote a little bit yesterday about.
I asked for some more time for study and to get more reaction from other folks that would be in a position to comment on this grant. And so I'm prepared to make a motion that we would pursue this grant, though I feel that we are, it's unlikely that we'll be successful in being awarded. I don't want to stand in the way of Commissioner Litz's efforts to, as she said, to take this under her work of her folks and also that we'd have limited county participation in terms of we would just be the pass-through for the money if awarded and we would handle reimbursement if there was a need to do that. So under those conditions, I would move that we go forward and that.
Can we, can I have clarification? Is that for both grants?
No. That's, this is just the USGS.
The Sunoco Mariner East money as well?
Well, that one's not really open yet.
Well, but when it comes open, so we can match maybe with that.
I haven't even looked at that one yet, so that one I do not. I'm just trying to deal with the one that we talked about that I asked for more time.
All right. Well, I'll second that.
All right. I would like to clarify the motion before I vote. I want to stipulate it that as the Board of Commissioners were approving, moving ahead with applying for this grant, but there be no county money or personnel attributed or invested in this effort.
There would have to be some personnel to get the information from you.
To get the information.
Right. If they request GIS database, for instance, that would have to be provided. There are certain things that the county would have to provide.
I'm talking about writing the grant. I do not want to.
No, they would write the grant.
Who's they?
It was in the paperwork that there are two entities involved, and I can't remember the name. Let me just, if I can find it, I just have to look. But the one gentleman who would write the grant, under his auspices, was it Chaplin or his boss, said they would write the grant, and then USGS would actually perform the data gathering.
Okay. Well, then I would like the motion to stipulate who's going to write the grant.
Yeah, it's in here. We can get that exact.
I don't want that exact because I don't want our planning department or our conservation district burdened with that because Lynette Beisinger has just resigned. A lot of people don't know that, that she's leaving. So certainly, the conservation district is burdened with the pipeline already, and our planning department has other issues on the table. So I don't want to see our folks burdened with this effort. You know, I'm willing to say, you know, sign off on it and give approval to proceed with it, but I don't, I don't want us financially or from a labor standpoint, a personnel standpoint, burdened with this effort.
Again, I, this county would not be writing the grant, but they would have to provide information that only the county has, and that would be available no matter what, right to know whatever. So, I mean, it's not that that's our job is to provide that data. They would not be writing the grant.
Yeah, make an attempt at a clarification.
Sure.
To maybe say what.
We need your help.
What will be done rather than what won't be done. So what it sounds to me is though the motion would provide for the county being the pass-through, so therefore the award, if it's, if the grant is awarded, it would be awarded to the county, which I think DCED would require is their single application. So the, so the county would be the awarded entity. Therefore, the county would have to draw down the funds to pay the bills that go along with the sampling of the grant. Letter of support, is that, is that something that you'd be willing to provide with it?
I would be, yeah.
Okay, so we can include a letter of support. And then lastly, the Commissioner Litz is referring to the data, so if there, I mean, there's no question there's data that's only.
If it's readily available.
That's only contained within, for example, GIS. And no matter who the applicant would be, so those three things be provided.
My whole other thought is understanding that the feedback we got was that nearly half of this weight of the, of this grant application would be pretty much against us because we don't have any wells, active wells, drilling going on in our county, so that the weight, you know, the advantages for the northern tier where all the Marcellus Shelf drilling is going on. So that's one part of this. So, but because Commissioner Litz has made such an impassioned, you know, effort to get this underway, and I, I'm though reluctant because I don't think we will be successful and I don't want to stand in the way of those efforts, I just wanted to ask if this is important enough to you, would you be willing to raise taxes to have this done if?
This is not.
Let me finish my question. This is, where do you think the tax, this is tax money.
This is not our local tax, except we could be raising.
No, my question is, if you'd let me finish. If we are unsuccessful in getting this grant, but this effort is so important, and you mentioned to me the other day, must we wait till someone dies from a well contamination? Are you willing to vote to raise taxes to provide the money for getting this done if we don't get the grant?
That sounds more political than a real question. We have a second source that will be available through the DEP and the Sunoco $12 million. We can also apply for that simultaneously. One and/or both of those can go together to fund this grant.
I'd rather.
You would, you would accuse someone of making a political statement, and you did in fact, as Commissioner Phillips indicated, sat right here and said, "Well, I guess we'll have to wait until someone dies." Now, that's a real political statement, Commissioner Litz. I just want you to be able to recognize it.
Well, and I'd further ask, isn't your answer more political than my question? I'm really asking it because if it's important enough, this, the grant money is tax money after all anyway. So I, to me, it's, if this is important enough to use tax money for, wouldn't we? I'm just asking that, so.
I don't see a need to raise taxes.
I figured that. Okay. So it's not important.
She never, she never knows.
I didn't say that.
What are you saying?
I said there are two sources of funding available. We should pursue those.
And if those are.
And that's the end of my statement.
Okay. Then I have one more follow-up. And if those are exhausted and unsuccessful, will you be willing to raise taxes to get this?
We can discuss something.
Okay. Fair enough. Take that as a maybe. That's it.
All right. Well, we have a motion.
I just have one question. Now, that money from that fines, would you say it was for the county and the municipalities or just for the municipalities?
Either. I mean, counties are considered municipalities, so.
Okay.
Any level of municipality would be eligible.
But any of our, any of our municipalities could apply for that as well.
That goes, that the line goes through.
Yeah, what, that's unclear to me yet.
Okay.
Is it only eligible for those that are touched by the pipeline?
I think it says that.
Or is it?
Okay. I just wanted to see if there was the, and I understand municipality could be counted, but I didn't.
Martin, do you?
Yeah, I'm totally confused now. If this money is only going to benefit where the pipeline runs through, those municipalities, right?
The second.
The second grant.
The second one I mentioned is that way.
Is the, there's the, the money coming from the fine, right?
The DEP grant.
The thirteen, what it was, a 13 and a half million?
Twelve and a half.
Twelve and a half million. But that money would only benefit the municipalities that the pipeline actually is coming through.
I'm actually waiting to see if that's the case or not.
Because.
I don't know whether another municipality in the same county that is affected or that it passes through could apply for it, or if a project that's outside of that corridor is eligible. They're going to release the details of the grant on May 7th.
Because, and like I say, I'm kind of totally confused here, but if, if that, if that money would only benefit those municipalities, and then nothing happens here, and you've got to raise taxes to pay for this?
No, we're not raising taxes, Mark.
We're not going to raise taxes?
No, we're not.
In other words, why should I pay or raise taxes on something that never benefited me in the first place, which actually happens a lot in government, but here's an outstanding example of it?
We're not raising taxes.
Is that, am I on the right path here?
You are. What Commissioner Litz is saying, and I think she would like to clarify, is that this was a do-or-die effort on her part that she wanted the other two commissioners to buy into, but it's not important enough to her to raise taxes. That's what she's saying.
Okay.
Let me back up just a second.
Do not put words on my mouth, sir. Thank you.
What you're saying, you just, you just said it. I just reiterated it.
The first initiative is the baseline groundwater study. There are funds available through the USGS to do those, that, a study like that. It's been done in seven counties already in the northern part, up along the New York border, and others are applying. There's, I think, another seven or eight applying.
Do two a year, is that?
Yeah, they estimate about two a year that they grant. That's a county-wide sample of wells geographically across the county, different for every corner, everything. They actually lay a grid work over the county, and they'll take a well or two in each of the blocks of the grid. So that's a, that's an across-the-county well sample for a baseline water, you know, to see.
And that's all over the county.
That, that would be all over the county. That's the first one. That's the one that was brought up two weeks ago and, and again today, that, that they're moving on right now to apply for under certain.
And who's, this groundwater study, who's paying for that? Where's the money coming from?
Well, the USGS has a, has $250,000 grants, but there's a, there's a required 15% cash match from the applicant, and, and the studies typically have costed, have cost, sorry, between three and 350,000 in the counties that have already done.
Two, yeah, two fif, a quarter of a million is nothing. That's a problem.
Two fifty is the grant, and then everything else is, is on the back of the applicant to raise or to provide or however.
And they would do this study in Lebanon County even though there's no wells here?
That remains to be seen. And, and the studies typically have costed, have cost, sorry, between three and 350,000 in the counties that have already done.
Two, yeah, two fif, a quarter of a million is nothing, that's a problem.
Two fifty is the grant and then everything else is, is on the back of the applicant to raise or to provide or however.
And they would do this study in Lebanon County even though there's no wells here?
That remains to be seen.
That remains to be seen. Okay.
I'd like to clarify, I believe this is an attempt to deflect the conversation from something that Commissioner Phillips said to a fictitious, or, I don't know. And so, it's unfair and I think it's rather transparent.
So, what are you referring, Martin's comments? Well, whatever you say.
No, but I'm saying, I'm the only private citizen in Lebanon County sitting here. So, I'm trying to understand is, and what I'm seeing is childish behavior. That's what I'm seeing. We got to bring, you know, we got to bring politics into everything. Let it out for crying out loud. This makes no sense to me. Years ago, there was a problem in North Lebanon Township. Somebody was dumping something in the sewer and it contaminated wells in the Ebenezer area. Nobody ever alerted us anything. When I did find out, I went and got my water tested because, of course, I have my own well. Guess who paid for that? Me. County didn't pay it, nobody paid, you know what I mean? So, it all comes back to that. Who pays for all of this? Me, the taxpayer, you know? What I, why don't these people leave this pipeline alone? I said, it's the first day they walked in here. I said, get out of their way, they're coming through. The federal government wants it, big business wants it. When they're all done, from the time they leave, a year later, I drove truck all over this country, I've seen pipelines go through, from a year later, from the time they leave, you will never know they were here because they've got to fix everything up. Why don't these people just get out of their way and everybody's so worried about contamination? Contamination's going on all the time, you're never going to stop it. And now we're fighting over a couple, a couple dollars here. I mean, I'm just trying to make sense of it all. So, what did we ever decide here now?
We didn't, we have a motion on the floor, Martin.
Okay.
All right, which I assume if, when the motion is actually in black and white, if we can take a look at it or we can vote on it today as, based on our understanding.
Yeah, I think what you'll, you know, my intention is, when it's drafted, put it before you or when it's in the minutes, is that it will specify what, what will be done by the county to, and just to that extent, those three things, as I said, a letter of support, pass-through for the funds and any data that's readily available.
And, and not funds. The, the, the matches, that have to be a cash match? And if it does?
Fifty percent has to be a cash match.
So, where would that come from?
We discussed all that previously, that we would seek, we're kind of short on time now, but we'll still seek matches.
Just wanted to hear you say that.
I'll call the question.
And part of that may be to apply for that, the D C E D or.
With the, with the motion on the floor and significant discussion, all those in favor of approving the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Anything else?
Thank you.
I have one more thing to say on the pipeline. The twelve and a half million they were fined, that's pocket change to these people, literally pocket change. That's not, and as soon as the judge said, "Look, I'm going to, I'm going to fine you twelve and a half million, but oh, you can start digging tomorrow morning." So, what did I mean? You know what I mean? Total joke, whole thing.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?